I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, June 13th, meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. We will start by just going around the table and quickly introducing ourselves, and that way anyone at home who is listening and unable to see us can hear our voices and get a feel for who we are. So I'll just start then. I'm Beth Cassavant, and I'm the chair. Just go around.
I'm Teresa Flynn, the vice chair.
John Samia, Clerk.
Michelle Conlin, Select Board Member.
Carlos Garcia, Board Member.
I'm Kevin Misicar, Town Manager.
Taylor Galusha, Communications Coordinator.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Item number two is to review and act to approve the minutes of May 23rd, 2023.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Item number three is announcements and reports, and we have a few announcements this evening. The first is about the Climate Action Plan Survey called All In Shrewsbury, and it's our campaign for a sustainable future, and our town government is stepping up to lead by example. Over the course of 2023, we will collect and analyze data, complete a series of community assessments, and engage our town staff and residents to complete a climate action and resiliency plan for municipal operations. So we're encouraging residents to please take a few minutes to complete the survey. It can be found on the town website at shrewsburyma.gov/allinsheersbury. The survey closes at the end of June, so you have a couple of more weeks to take advantage of that opportunity. Item number two is flag disposal. The Shrewsbury Fire Department was proud to host Evan Romano of Troop 227 of St. Anne's. Evan created a drop box for tattered or out-of-commission American flags to be disposed of in a respectful manner. Thank you to Evan and his troop for providing this service for our community, which is housed in the entry of fire headquarters. Additionally, at the entrance of the Council on Aging, there is another drop box for American flags. And just to note, this was Evan Romano's Eagle Scout project, and really grateful for him for finding a way to collect tattered flags so that residents can dispose of them. And then I will turn it over to Carlos for our third announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to remind and encourage folks to attend the Affordable Housing Trust Community Forum, which will be held tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. Presentations will begin at 6:30 p.m., and the open house with tabling will follow afterwards. During the community forum, the town's project consultants will discuss some of their initial findings and provide opportunities for community members to share their vision for the Affordable Housing Trust Action Plan. You'll be invited to participate in a variety of activities to voice your insights, and you can learn more about the Affordable Housing Trust on the town website.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other announcements to share this evening? Mr. Samia?
Madam Chair, thank you. We held our first office hours this evening from 5:30 to 6:30. Select Board Member Garcia and I had it. We had great conversations with members of the communities, provided us feedback, had some informational requests, which we'll gladly follow up on. So it was a great initial foray into office hours after a three-year hiatus. But what was really great about it, it was an opportunity to have informal conversation, not in front of camera, and provide another venue for residents to come and let us know what they think and questions that they have and information that they need. And the next opportunity will be the first Tuesday meeting of July, July 11th, 5:30 to 6:30, and the plan is to mix and match members of the Select Board. So it will be no more than two of us at any given time, but it provides an opportunity to meet with us and would love to hear from residents as well. And then we also have a survey outstanding, which closes on June 30th, asking members of the community, when is a convenient time to meet? So we'd plan to have additional office hours based on the feedback that we receive, and that closes at the end of June.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, both of you, for participating in our first office hours tonight. Appreciate that. All right. Turn it over to the town manager for your report.
Good evening, Board Members. I have three updates for you. First two are financial. So I did want to confirm that with regards to local receipts, which is, you know, a variable source of revenue, but very important source of revenue at the same time, our third-largest funding category in the general fund. Through Midway, we have a little more than $1 million over our target revenue collection amount, so we're in a really good position. And we'll be updating these figures in the weeks to come as we close out the fiscal year, but we're in a solid position there. We will be going to the Finance Committee this Thursday evening and requesting some reserve fund transfers to offset some challenges within the budget that departments are having, very minor incremental changes. They total less than 2/10 of 1% of the total operating budget, and we'll ask for the Finance Committee's consideration of those final adjustments for the fiscal year. And then I'm really excited to share two economic development opportunities that have come to the community, which have come through us through the Mass Office of Business Development. Earlier this week, Select Board Member Cassavant and I were able to greet a high-tech manufacturing company who's considering space at Centec North, and we were also asked to engage in the near future with a pharmaceutical wholesale distribution company, part of a larger Fortune 100 pharmaceutical company that is interested in another location within the community. So it's always great to have these opportunities to engage with large employers and do our best to attract them into the spaces that we have commercially available in Shrewsbury.
Yeah. Just talking about yesterday, the whole team was there, so it was the two of us, but also, you know, we had members of the Planning and Economic Development Department. We had our Assistant Town Manager Baldinger was there, Patty Sheehan from the Building Inspector's Office, Chris Roy, the General Manager of Selco. Missing anybody?
DPW Director.
Right. DPW Director Jeff Holland was also there. So it was, I mean, it's the first time I've participated in that kind of a meeting, but it really was to show that Shrewsbury is welcoming and willing to work with businesses who are looking to locate here. And, you know, you assembled the whole team so that everybody could introduce themselves and talk about what their role would be and how we would want to make it as easy as possible for a business to locate in Shrewsbury. So that was, I thought, it was a really nice opportunity for me to see just how we do welcome businesses to town and try to encourage that commercial development. I was really proud of our team yesterday. All right. That brings us to public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31, to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during the Select Board meeting on matters within the Board's authority, but no one has signed up for that opportunity this evening. So we will move on to item number six under Meetings and Hearings, which is a legislative update from our state delegation, Senator Michael Moore and Representative Hannah Kane. If you could come on up to the table, including the status of the FY '24 state budget. We're just really happy to have you both here, so welcome.
Do you want us to wait for the rest of the delegation?
Yeah. It's not like we have so many more.
You are the delegation.
We also noted that every time we meet with you, the table gets further and further.
I felt like the table was really far away tonight, too.
Don't know if that's a hint.
Social.
Well, thank you very much for having us here tonight. We certainly have a lot to share on the state budget level. Just wanted to start out congratulating Chairperson Beth Cassavant on her reelection and welcoming my former colleague on the Finance Committee, Carlos Garcia, to your role on the Select Board. It's great to see you both here, and it's great to be able to call you Select Board members, which we haven't been back to you since that legislation was signed into law at the end of last session. So happy to be able to use that nomenclature with you. As always, Senator Moore and I work very closely together, as do our staffs, and so it's a real honor and joy to work with him in this capacity, and honestly, just also so grateful to work with the town of Shrewsbury, everyone in it. To your earlier point, Chair Cassavant is just very welcoming and wants to work together. And so in any opportunity that we have to work with town officials or town staff, it's just a great opportunity and a great partnership, and thank you to the town manager for his leadership, certainly coming from the top in that effort as well. As you know, we're in the first year of our two-year legislative session. We're in the 193rd legislative session. So in January, the Senator and I were busy filing our bills. I filed 30 bills across a broad number of things. I think the Senator probably filed 3,000. He's very prolific in legislative filing. And we were named to our committee positions. So I am once again back serving as the ranking minority member in the House on healthcare financing and on public health. I picked up elder affairs. We're going to be doing a large sort of nursing home bill related to healthcare pieces to that this session, and also the House Committee on Ethics. I'm also very pleased this session to be the co-chair of the Women's Caucus, the 62-member caucus, with 63 until one of our colleagues, a colleague of the Senators, stepped down to join the Healey administration last week, so now we're back to 62. And also continuing my work as a co-chair of the Food System Caucus and focusing a lot of my time and efforts on anti-hunger issues, and then also in partnership was able to attend the White House Conference last fall, and have been working as part of that group to focus on ending hunger in Massachusetts by 2030, as well as nationally, but our efforts are focused here. So I'll pause there. Want to share what you've been up to?
Thank you. So actually, Representative Kane and I were actually commenting, talking about how the Board has changed over the many years. Kevin, I think you're actually the town manager. I think you're actually now the most of all of the Board.
That's why I moved the table back.
So it's always been good dealing with the Board and working with the Board, current town manager and the former town manager, and like Representative Kane and I, as Head said, it's nice to have a colleague that you can work with, work together with, not working against. So it's good to work with our entire delegation in the Select Board. So we did, as Representative Kane talked about, we have started the next legislative session. I filed, I only filed 86 bills.
Oh, good.
I probably co-sponsored 2,000. As far as committee assignments go, I am actually the Chair of the Advanced Information, Technology, and Cyber Security Committee. So hopefully we'll be dealing with all the talk going on right now of AI and privacy and cybersecurity. So we had a lot of proposals coming through, so hopefully we'll be dealing with those issues coming up. We actually have our first hearing coming up July 13th, and we're going to be hearing a multitude of bills. And sometime in the fall, we'll be dealing with privacy, data privacy. So hopefully those will go well. I also sit on the vice chair of the Committee on Finance, so dealing, initially when we first got the committee, we had the whole issue with the SVV Bank, so luckily that didn't materialize into something bigger than what we've had to deal with, but was a little nervous at first. And I sit on Ways and Means and the Committee on Revenue. Other than that, I think other than working on, we've had the budget, we're going to be doing the tax reform next week, actually, excuse me, this week. We have a caucus this week going over the tax reform proposal, which the House has already done and will be doing. In the budget, we're going to go over the budget numbers, but what we did is the House did the tax reform first before the Senate, I mean, before their budget. We actually did our budget, and we're doing a tax reform this week. But we allocated 600, roughly, $600 million in our budget to fund all the tax proposals that we're going to be working on. Other than that, do you want to go with the budget numbers?
Sure. I'd give maybe one legislative update, which is that we did file, at the request of the town, the legislation that we worked on to allow the town of Shrewsbury to grant the abatement for the real estate taxes as the domicile of Ava Roy. That is filed, and we heard today that we think we're going to be able to get that bill onto an upcoming revenue hearing on June 22nd. I don't know the timing of it yet, and we're 98% sure they're going to be able to add it in, but we're trying to expedite that so that we can get that home loan petition moved swiftly through the legislature. So we'd ask, if possible, just to hold the 22nd so that somebody from the town could come and testify in support of that bill with us. Sure. Do you want to start on the budget? You want me to?
Good.
All right. Actually, probably one other quick update, and something you are aware of, the Chapter 90 money. Why this isn't on the second week in January is a mystery to me, but the House and the Senate had a small difference that they couldn't resolve easily. So now the Chapter 90 legislation, which is the annual appropriation of funding for local roads and bridges, is in a conference committee of six people attempting to work out a $25 million difference. And so unfortunately, that's not done yet, and I know that's really unfortunate from a timing of the construction season for you as a municipality. When it eventually does get resolved, Shrewsbury will have $987,672.30 in Chapter 90 funds coming to the community.
Should note that usually it's done much earlier than where we are right now. So in my 15 years, I think this is the latest I've ever seen it.
So in the fiscal year 24 budget, I'll just touch on a couple of things and let the Senator expand. You know, a small increase to the town in terms of the local government unrestricted state aid. The House has it at $134,293. I think the Senate has a tiny bit higher number. They apportioned a little bit more to it. On the Chapter 70 aid, it's coming in for the town of Shrewsbury at $20,971,468, and I think that's consistent between both branches. We allocated the same funding amount. In addition, there were some additional dollars allocated for education, particularly to address the issue that the Chapter 766 schools have had a high increase, a 14% increase was allowed for them, which is unusual amount. Usually it's a much smaller amount, and because that gets funded out of the local allocations, you know, we have to pay into that. As you know, it's hard to fund something that has a 14% increase when you're limited at a two and a half prop. So there was some additional dollars that have been set aside for that. Again, the budget is not finalized, as the House did ours in April, the Senate did theirs in May, and now there's a conference committee working on that. But I do anticipate that that number will come out that is a good-sized amount to help communities face sort of this delta that exists in between how to fund that. In addition, there were several local earmarks that the Senator and I were able to get in the House and the Senate. One was an annual allocation that we have asked for for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. In the past, that has been dedicated to youth mental health first aid. This year, because of a federal grant that we were able to get at SYFS, asked more generally for just support for mental health services, and that was funded at $75,000 this year, which is a $25,000 increase over previous years. We also were able to get $30,000 for the Shrewsbury Public Library Children's Room for new furniture, which was a priority that was asked for by the town manager through your leadership to us. And then something that had come a while back to me that I had worked with the town manager on was a request for the automated external defibrillators at our recreation fields in town, where we don't have them, and we were able to get a $15,000 allocation to help us fund that. And also, the American Heart Association is interested in helping us with that as well. So very happy about that. And then let the Senator share the additional allocation earmark.
Okay. Thank you. So in, as Representative Kane talked about, so in the UGGA, the Senate funded it at $3.33 million. The House was $3.28 million, the Governor was $3.29 million, so there's a slight increase on the Senate side. Hopefully that will carry through. In the final budget, we both did the $60 per pupil, where the Governor was only $30, so that was up. School transportation, the Senate funded at $97.1 million. The House was actually significantly higher. They were $107.9 million. So hopefully we'll go with the House number on that. And then the circuit breaker, Senate did it at $503.8 million. The House was $506.1 million. So again, relatively close. Far as the local earmarks, I was able to obtain $35,000 for Dean Park, for the ADA work accessibility, and also we were contacted by the Lake and Sigmund Association. I think if you remember that, we had the big septic spill a year and a half ago, Tias, on the lake. So I was able to get $5 million in a bond bill, which the previous administration funded the first million. But during those conversations, the concern because of the waste that went into the lake was that was going to cause more growth of weeds. So working with the Lake Commission, we were able to get $40,000 for de-weeding, so hopefully that will continue to control the weeds in the lake. Another area as far as a budget amendment that was able to get in the Senate side and hope will carry on the House side is, are you familiar with the accelerated repair program, spending cap program? While there's a cap, well, we were able to get language in the Senate side waiving the cap, exempting the cap, so now they can expend over that. So if there's any projects, infrastructure projects that you think the school may need, I would recommend trying to look at that and trying to, if this goes through in the budget, trying to access that cap being waived. And the, also in local, well, an amendment filed, so Math and Science Academy in Worcester, it's run by WPI, that was funded at $1.5 million. Now, I know that a lot of students from Shrewsbury go to Samsa out in West Marlboro?
Samsa, yeah.
Samsa, okay. Well, actually, the Math and Science Academy in Worcester, their highest student body count is from Shrewsbury. So we were able to get a $500,000 increase in that to bring it up to 2 million to level fund that. So there won't be any cuts there. And one thing, one amendment I was not successful in getting, which I am, and the whole issue was actually tabled, and is going to be being brought up later in this session, and that has to do with Volk schools. We're all familiar with what's going on with the enrollment or the acceptance of students. So I had filed an amendment to have a commission established to look at that issue and to try to open up access to all municipalities to Volk schools. It was, I withdrew the amendment. We were told that there's actually a bill right now that's filed by one of our, I don't know if there's on the House side or not, but on the Senate side, Senator Cronin has a bill to look at establishing a lottery system for across the board for Volk schools, vocational schools. There's a lot of, there's a lot of heated discussion about it, so the issue's going to come up. But I agree with the fact that we shouldn't even be looking at that aspect until we guarantee every student has some access to vocational training. So I do anticipate this issue going to be elevated sometime during this legislative session. So that's something I will be trying to work on, is trying to get, whether it's a commission or something established so that we can look at it so that students in Shrewsbury, and there's actually many, many communities that right now that their students do not have access to any vocational training. So that's something we're going to be trying to look at. Other than that, the fair share, do you want to go with the fair share?
Sure. So this was the first budget cycle where the, depending on your perspective, fair share or millionaire's tax was included as part of the revenue projections, and about $1 billion was anticipated. And that was sort of, in the House, it was about equally divided between transportation and education needs. One particular area to note on that in the House, we dedicated $161 million out of about the $500 million in education to funding universal school meals. That has been something that has been a real game changer in terms of not only anti-hunger issues, but also opportunity for kids to learn when they're not sitting there hungry. And so that is something that the Superintendent's Association was also very vocal and supportive about, which was great. I appreciated Dr. Sawyer's advocacy in that effort as well. On average, it saves households up to about $1,200 per year per child, and that is something where, again, we as a state have made a decision that in our effort to end hunger, this is a really important component piece of that. As you also, I know, know, the issues on transportation are many. It's taking up a significant amount of time, talking about the situation, certainly of the MBTA. One good piece to note is that things have been a little bit smoother on the commuter rail the last year or so, and ridership has gone up. So for that piece, we're sort of thankful. That contract for the commuter rail, we'll be going out to bid in the next couple of years, so we'll see how that gets dealt with. That will be a potentially a big shift. But we do a lot of work to make sure that transportation throughout the Commonwealth is recognized, not just in the urban center, which gets a lot of the conversation in it. And certainly as part of that is the effort to fund the RTAs and the work that Worcester has been doing, and certainly always trying to increase opportunities for our ridership here in Shrewsbury for access to that. Any questions on the budget?
So we're actually seeing the, for the millionaire's tax with the fair share, the original estimates ranged from, I don't know, from $1.3 to $1.5 to $2 billion of revenue coming in. All three, the administration, House, and Senate agreed to utilize, to agree for an estimate of $1 billion. So there's been $1 billion that they determined to put in the budget that we would hopefully get in revenue from that, because obviously we don't know until we have one full-year cycle. So it was $500 million going to education, $500 million going to transportation. Some of the other communities I've gone to, there seemed to be some confusion on, some confusion or perception, thinking that if it went through, the education component was going to go to Chapter 70. It is, most of that money, if not all of it this year, is going to higher education and early education on the education side. Again, so this is a one-year allocation, so every year can change. So five, then the other $500 million, $190 million is going to the MBTA, another $100 million will go to Chapter 90. So that's in addition to the Chapter 90 bill we had. There's another 100, as Representative Kane talked about, regional transit funding. There's a $50 million highway and bridge repair program, and then there'll be another $50 million for federal infrastructure, matching federal infrastructure money. Most of the, again, in early education, I think there's $475 million going to early education and C3 grants, and that's it on the fair share. Other than that, we are doing, again, we're doing the tax proposals next week. The House has already done that, excuse me, this week. Some of the proposals that we have, as far as the tax proposals in the House, obviously has some different language, which will then have to go to a conference committee.
Are you looking for what the House is doing?
Yeah. No, the Senate, we did, oh, I think I left them in the car. Oh, no? Okay, wait a minute.
So there's some similarities between what we did in the House and the Senate, in particular raising the estate tax threshold from $1 million to $2 million and removing the cliff effect, so you're getting that increased tax over $2 million, not on everything that comes underneath that. There's also a dependent tax credit for families and caregivers and expanded breaks for renters, seniors, and low incomes. One of the differences between the House and the Senate, in the House, we slashed the short-term capital gains tax from 12% to 5%. Senate did not, I'm sure somebody's filed an amendment, but that was not in the released bill that came out on the Senate side. And then also, you know, we did some work around the fact that, you know, Massachusetts, the governor has talked a lot about competitiveness, and so in that, we're looking at sort of being competitive at all levels, whether or not it's from a business perspective or from an ability to try and keep people here, young people, who we're not a competitive state to keep them right now because of high costs, particularly due to rental or first-time home buyer. And so, you know, we sort of took that approach as well in the House to think about, how can we pass a tax cut bill that benefits everybody, that there's something in it for everyone, which also means everyone's not happy because not everything they wanted in it. And so as the Senator said, you know, once they pass their Senate version, that will also go to a conference committee. And as is typical, the Senate will put in some things that we didn't put in the House side that they want, and we put some things on the House side that the Senate won't take up because they will trade for it. So it's possible that the final bill comes out with a lot of what is in both because they're complementary.
So similar to what we talked with the House with the universal free meals, I think that's more of a budget negotiation tactic. So I'm hoping that that's going to come out in the budget, where we had things in the budget that the House didn't, so I think that could be one of the issues that's going to be budget negotiated in. So on the Senate side, what we are proposing, and the House is going to have some different numbers on this, so we actually are proposing a rental tax deduction cap of going from 3,000 to 4,000. So we're going to be increasing that tax deduction. We're going to be increasing the earned income tax credit from 30% to 40% of the federal tax credit. Senior circuit breaker tax for the cap, 750 to 1,500. I'm almost positive you guys are higher. So some of these will be negotiated out. We have a, we have an increase in the housing development incentive program, H-DIP, where we're increasing it to 57, a one-time increase of $57 million, because right now the program has a backlog of projects. So we're hoping to get that through to try to adjust, to address that backlog. We also have increases in the Housing Development Initiative Program, increasing that cap from $10 to $30 million. We have a low, and that's actually for Gateway Cities, raise the authorization for low-income housing tax credit from $40 million to $60 million, increase child independent tax credit from $180 to $300. Increase child independent tax credit from 180 to 310. I think you have it at 600, don't you, the House?
It's at 600 for dependent.
Yeah, so the House has it at 600. So, that's, that's one that the Senate's coming to lower on. And then, as Representative Kane talked about, the estate tax, we're going from 1 million to 2 million. It eliminates the cliff effect. The short-term capital gains tax is not in there. I would be very surprised if it's in our version, period. Well, maybe, yeah. I am actually, another piece that was in the House that is not in the Senate was the single sales tax factor. Right now, we have certain home-based corporations that are being taxed using the single sales tax factor, which right now, they're using three different factors to tax them, penalizing them over companies that are not based here. So, I've actually had legislation filed to, to change this, to put our home-based corporations on the same playing field as out-of-state corporations. The House actually had it in their budget, the Senate was not, didn't have it in ours. I will be filing an amendment for that, whether it's.
It was in our tax bill, not the budget.
Yeah, the tax bill, I'm sorry, the tax bill. So, I don't, I don't know how successful I will be at that, but that is an initiative that we're trying to do, to try to put our, to put our home-based corporations on the same, actually a fair playing field. It doesn't make sense to me that we're having out-of-state corporations that are paying less taxes than are home-based when, you know, we have a staffing shortage now in all sorts of companies. We should be doing anything, we tend to try to level the playing field, making them more competitive rather than hurting them. So, I think that, and the only other thing on the fair share, which I forgot to mention, was, came the, from the government administration to the House to the Senate, was that there is a trust fund, Education and Transportation Trust Fund that was established, that the money from the fair share is going into that fund. So, this way, there will be some transparency to make sure that the money is going to the programs it's supposed to be, which is education and transportation.
All right. Any questions from board members?
Couple comments, if you don't mind. Just a quick question, what to, on the estate tax, what do you think the likelihood that will happen? It's been talked about for a few years, right, to increase from one to two or some number? Do you think that'll?
It will happen.
Okay. Thank you. And then, another question, PFAS?
PFAS.
Yeah, what do you, understanding, one thing that you, Kevin and I have talked about, and just looking at municipalities deciding to be part of class action legislation, there was a, where does it? I know the Commonwealth's looking at regulation.
Attorney General's office actually has already been part of the class action.
Okay.
Nationally, on the PFAS.
That's in South and South Carolina, that one? And do you know what the, what the hope is? Is it gonna be, they haven't settled though, right?
No, no. They only, the former, well, the governor, when she was Attorney General, filed it, I think was like maybe the second year before she left office. So, right, so basically, right now, is we've got, there's, six years ago, there was legislation filed to ban PFAS from firefighting equipment in the fire, fire suppression chemicals. That was filed by Senator DeZaglio at the time, and I co-sponsored it. I also filed legislation banning it from food, menu, food packaging products. And Senator Seer, Julian Seer from the Cape, filed legislation to create a task force to have a broad study of it. The legislation that passed turned out to be the Comprehensive Task Force. They came out with, so they spent all last sessions studying it. They came out with a report, and in the report, there is multiple recommendations that they are going to try to implement, or that we're gonna try to pass this year in a comprehensive piece of legislation. I do know as far as the food packaging and the firefighting equipment and the bio-suppressant equipment should be part of that. But there's, it's a whole range of different proposals that are part of the PFAS initiative.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see, because cities and towns have opted in as well as separate participants in the class action.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, which puts some companies on their heels as well, because it just becomes a quagmire in terms of who's trying to bring who in and all of that, but I just didn't know if there were any developments in that.
So, a lot of the, and I can get, if you want to, if it's a surprise, I can get you the comprehensive piece, comprehensive piece. There are many aspects of it that, if I believe the date is 2030.
Okay.
Many of these products that currently have PFAS will have to find a, a non-carcinogen product to replace it. So, there is, there is a timeframe for that.
All right, thank you.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Did you have a couple comments?
Yeah, if you don't mind. So, just first, we have the opportunity to work with both of you and your staffs, and everyone's always super responsive and strong advocates for Shrewsbury, and we appreciate that relationship that we have, not only with you, but with your staff. So, really appreciate how they work with us. Just a couple of comments on your, your budget stuff. So, that list of earmarks that you've identified and amendments that will support the town is the biggest that it's been since I've been here, and I just wanted to recognize your advocacy for that. Not only in total number of earmarks that are still in the budget, but the dollar value, both are higher than I ever seen. It's huge. It allows us to do things that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. When it comes to chapter 90 and the bond bill, we know that that was initiated at 200 million dollars again, and the state, I think, has shown time and time again over the last two or three years that through the winter recovery or repair assistance program, the 300,000 dollars has been possible each and every year. So, we're strong advocates for at least going in to have a bond bill at 300 million dollars starting next year for chapter 90. And we appreciate the change that the administration made this year in forwarding us the, the money for the winter assistance program, because we haven't had the chance to spend it all before the June 30th deadline, so that's really helpful. And of course, inflation has really waved its hand in the construction industry, so the 200 million dollar bond bill doesn't go as far as it's gone, obviously, for the last few years. And it is our primary source for repairing roads. And then, we appreciate all the higher numbers on either side of the table, so. We'll advocate for both higher and then, but when it comes to like the core part of the budget and having the availability to get that 14% increase that was afforded to higher education institutions for, you know, given to us this year and not have to wait under the traditional model to get it next year is, is, is really helpful for us. And, you know, the education funding and the general government assistance, we always benefit more from the education funding. I know a lot of communities don't feel that way, but we appreciate your advocacy there as well. So, just thanks for all your hard work in, in getting us these funds and supporting us throughout the year. Appreciate it.
And I'd also like to give an update, if possible, on the folks that we have who are being sheltered in a lodging facility in Shrewsbury. And this is something that Senator and I have worked quite a bit on, first in Westboro, and Westboro, since last December, has, I think we have 73 families in Westboro right now, and we're also working, there's a permanent shelter that's going to go in, in Westboro, which has also been something that we've been working on. Here in Shrewsbury, I really want to acknowledge and thank the fact that not only all of our town officials, on both the town manager's side and the select board, the school committee and the Shrewsbury Public Schools, have been incredibly welcoming and working together to try and help the families that are there. I also really want to call out on the school side, our district social worker, Felicity Beware, has been really tremendous, along with many others, but want to acknowledge the fact that, again, it's really great to represent a community who is always trying to do the right thing. Additionally, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services stepped up right away. Really want to acknowledge Christine Maury and Jen Rifkin of trying to help triage when people started to arrive, and we didn't have a lot of support with getting things that families needed. And it's great to see Shrewsbury families stepping up. I think the, Kevin, you shared with me, I think it's over 3,100 dollars or so that has been raised by 27 or 29 donations. And I have some more on what would be helpful in terms of future donations that I can share at the end. As all of you know, because we're doing a weekly call between the town and the schools and the state and our offices, last week, we had put a new model into place by which SMOC, who is serving as the provider, was going to have two full-time people, Monday through Friday, doing case management. And that was going to be very helpful, because as it was, anyone who was approaching, whether it was the schools or SYFS or any of us going in, was being inundated because there's such need, need for services, need for connections. And that model was in place through last week, and then, this week, we found out one of the two case managers was on vacation, which, again, these people have worked tremendously hard, and so, they need vacation. But the other case manager also had been reassigned, was just quite frankly, very young and overwhelmed and not ready to, to deal with the fact that we went from 48 families to 71 families in a matter of a couple of days. And so, right now, we have 71 families, 202 adults and 49 student-age children who are there. We worked the last 24 hours with SMOC and with the state to put patchwork into place until they can get staff realigned to be there again, supporting us Monday through Friday, nine to five. We also importantly got the state to agree to a pause on providing any more families sheltering into a lodging facility in Shrewsbury at the moment. That pause won't be forever. That pause is for us to get a chance to, to make sure that a staffing model is in place, build to support them. And I was on site this afternoon and met with a couple of members of the SMOC team. They indicated their gratitude for volunteers, but we do need to have a formal policy in place. We've had several people just showing up to try and be helpful, and that's causing some problems. And so, we need to put, one of the things I asked Select Board Chair Casavant today on the phone, if we could work together to come up with sort of a policy and to think about how to help organize the volunteers, because it is still, there's, there's intense need there, but we also have to provide some structure by which the SMOC folks can work and the other folks who are contracted to provide services there. In addition, they did mention that the needs that exist in terms of donations, personal care products would be very much appreciated, wipes and diapers, zero to six, are very much in need. Also, toys. The young people who are there have very little by way to entertain themselves when they're not in a classroom setting. So, educational toys, learning toys. I also want to acknowledge that we've been working with the Shrewsbury Public Schools, again, to proactively think about how to engage the young people who are living there in the summer. We've been working and thinking about the enrichment program that already exists and building capacity into that. But that also only goes from the end of June through July, and we've been working with the state to talk about what activities and access to services young people will have in the month of August before school starts up again. It's a conversation that's going on across the state. Again, Shrewsbury, very proud of them. They've been at the table, thinking through this on their own and coming to the state with ideas, which is just the state has been extremely appreciative of. As you probably know too, we just got a new Housing Secretary. Before Housing and Economic Development had been housed under one secretary at, at the state level for many years. We now have a separate Housing Secretary. It's called Housing and Livable Communities now, HLC, which used to be DHCD. The new secretary is somebody familiar to all of us in this region. It's the former city manager from Worcester at Augustus. We have been in contact with him quite often, making him aware of the challenges that exist, because the reality is you simply cannot place people into emergency shelter without having a provider on-site to help welcome them and transition them. The state is at a crisis point right now. We're the only right-to-shelter state in the country. And we also live in a state with a very high housing cost, with increased costs of food. Everything has an increased cost, and more families are struggling. And we also don't have any capacity to move people from emergency, emergency shelter into any sort of housing stock, whether it's an apartment or anything else. The entire system is stressed. So, this is a long-term problem that's gonna take a lot of people around the table. The state has put an incident command structure, so that this is not just being dealt with by the Housing Secretary yet, but they have sort of a whole of government response, thinking about, they have staff from Health and Human Services, focusing work with people on mass health with on access to SNAP benefits, making sure they're signed up for those, as well as DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is a part of the conversations and on-the-phone calls with us, this new meetings weekly. That being said, this isn't going to be an easy solve. And I think we, as a community, you know, need to understand that the likelihood of people living in emergency shelter across the state, and in particular, you know, in Shrewsbury, is, it's not a quick solve. We, with the schools, have been planning for school next year for the students who are living there. When the emergency shelter, when the permanent shelter system opens in Westboro, which is gonna house about 20 families, they will be drawn first from the folks who are in shelter in Westboro, who are already enrolled in the Westboro Public Schools to provide consistency. And then, certainly, if there was anyone here who also fit into that Westboro school system enrollment, then they would probably go as well. But I just, I want to stress that we, as a community, are in this for a longer term, and the work that we're doing now is to ensure that we're putting into place the support to be able to support the people who are in emergency shelter and also be cognizant of not having the strain on our public school system in terms, especially in terms of enrolling and dealing with social work issues and all that be excessive. And again, I'll just close with thanking everyone. It really has been amazing to watch everyone in the town of Shrewsbury, in particular, those in our elected and appointed office, to come together to work on this issue.
Along that line, again, I want to thank the people of Shrewsbury and the town for everything they're doing and for working with us on this and the state to address this issue. Just to, to expand upon what Representative Kane talked about, this is gonna be a long haul. There's currently over 60 communities that are being utilized right now for this, for emergency housing. There's over, there's over 4,600 units that are being utilized across the state, and sadly, it's not enough. So, this is an issue that we're gonna have to work with the communities on, and we really do appreciate the fact that the community and the town officials and local community is working with everyone on this. The two communities that I'm dealing with are Westboro and Shrewsbury, as Representative Kane. So, if really, without the local partnership, it would be very hard for this to be a successful program and way to, to help house people who really need the housing. So, thank you.
Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from people?
No questions, but thank you for everything that you've done. It's a lot, and it's appreciated.
So, I, just a comment. So, this has been maybe three and a half weeks since I first got the call from you at 10:00 to 5:00 on a Friday afternoon, basically saying, there's families and they're being lodged in an emergency shelter in Shrewsbury, and we had to get into action. You know, you really can't prepare for something like this, and you aren't really aware of what the scope is going to be. But, you know, one of the first calls was to Representative Kane, just to sort of get an idea of, you know, how we could get the support that we needed from the state and ask her to advocate, along with Senator Moore, for the well-being of the families that were being housed here. I know that over those initial weeks, there were several times when you would set up a meeting for just myself and Christine Maury from Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, with someone from the state offices and you, so that we all had a really good understanding that this was not going to be quick. You know, I think many of us thought back to, I think it was December of 2013 or 14, you know, when there were some families that came into Shrewsbury, and it was the holidays, and we all rallied together, and we fed, and we provided, you know, gifts for the children so that they had a holiday. And then, it seemed to just dissipate within a couple of weeks, and that's not the situation that we have. And I'm grateful to your support, both of you, your advocacy, and also to, to town staff. I mean, when, when the decision was made to set up donations, monetary donations, it happened quickly. When it became clear that there was a need for in-kind donations, it was within hours that there was, there were donation bins put out. that there was, there were donation bins put out, there was a sign, a plan in place for how to get those donations to Shrewsbury Youth Family Services so that they could be brought to families. And all of it was done with the utmost respect for people's privacies and for the privacies of those families. And so, when you talk about making sure people aren't showing up at the facility where people are trying to live their lives, you know, that's also because we want to make sure that we do maintain the dignity and the privacy of the families who are staying with us in Shrewsbury because they're part of our community now. So, I'm just really grateful for the support. And when we talk about how well we work with both of you, it really is a partnership and you see how that pays dividends in a situation like this.
I appreciate that. And I, and I do think, remembering back to having worked to support the families that were here in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen, the state didn't have a, there wasn't a support mechanism at the time. It was sort of hotels and motels were used as overflow shelter then, but without sort of any surround. There's been a lot of work done by the Baker-Pleito Administration and now the Driscoll, excuse me, Healy-Driscoll Administration to have in place more formal ways in which our shelter system works and when it needs to be overflow. We've just surpassed capacity now and we're in a very difficult situation. And so, I want to acknowledge that there has been a lot of work done on the state level. It sometimes doesn't feel like it at the moment because the system is just so stretched and there's literally not a provider last night. I would be remiss if I, again, didn't say that the folks who are working at the Department of Housing and Livable Communities, they're working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Really remarkable, remarkable work. And so, I want folks to know that it isn't that people aren't doing their jobs, it's just the system is beyond capacity and we're all doing what we can to help people. So, thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you. Just to go along with, again, to go along with that, part of the problem is, you know, government can't do everything. We have to work as a team, local officials, but also the private sector and nonprofits. And the problem we are having right now is a lot of the providers, as every industry sector we have, is the staffing shortage. So, it's hard, even in areas where they have, may have the funds to hire, it's finding the people to hire. So, that's an issue that we've, that we're also trying to deal with. Now, we've tried to increase funding for salaries for human service providers. Some cases it's worked, some cases it really hasn't. We haven't been able to bring more staff in. So, with the overcapacity and then the issue of staffing shortages across the board, that's, you know, just further burdening the system and the capabilities that we, that can be provided.
Just one more thing I would note, I'd be remiss if I didn't just put out there that we are still working on the Route Twenty project. We have fought, it got moved temporarily to fiscal year twenty-eight. We fought to get it back in the fiscal year twenty-six funding mechanism. And so, I just want to note to the community, that is a high priority for us and we continue to advocate, advocate and make sure that that project is moving forward as expeditiously as humanly possible.
Thank you. Did you have a comment around?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in and for providing such a detailed update on all of the different balls that you're juggling right now on behalf of the community. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next, next year, the table will be back there.
We're just going to have you, like, out in the parking lot, piped in.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Can we just remind folks that might be listening at home how they can contribute or whether, you know, monetary donations or in-kind donations, some of the materials that Representative Kane mentioned? We have two donation bins out in front of Town Hall that are regularly monitored by town staff and for any drop-off donations. And then there is a link on our website for making monetary donations to help the families.
And they are tax-deductible donations as well.
So, thank you all for everything you've done for this. It was, I remember, like, the first few days, it was like a lot of, there was chaos. There was so little information and so much happening and changing, like, by the minute. So, I appreciate all the updates that we've gotten as a board and all the work that you've all done to, to help these folks. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number seven, which is a meeting with Paul Campanello, who is the Chair of the Shrewsbury Housing Authority regarding the Shrewsbury Housing Authority's pilot payment. So, I'll call you up to the table, Mr. Campanello. Thanks for being here with us and for waiting a bit for your.
Thank you. I promise, I can't promise. I seriously doubt this will be as long as that was. This will probably just be a few minutes. First of all, thank you very much for having me. The board has probably turned over more than once or twice since we've done this. We used to do this on a, maybe not an annual basis, but every few years, the Housing Authority would come up and make a pilot and just give a quick update. And I know that I've done it at least two or three times and I'm on the board now fifteen years, but I feel like maybe since COVID, we haven't been here since then. So, it's a little history. This isn't out of the blue, though. It may be with the existing staff and the, and tenure of this board. So, as Mrs. Casavant said, I am Paul Campanello. I'm the Chair of the Housing Authority. Thank you for having me. Congratulations, Mr. Garcia, and Chair Casavant, on your reelections. I thought, I sent a letter in advance of this and hope you got it. I'm not going to sit here and read a letter to you because I think we all sit through enough presentations to make our eyes roll over and do that. I thought I would just hit a few of the high points and maybe take a few questions. We do maintain, and I think this board knows this, but maybe it's worth saying at the very beginning, we, we run, and I don't know if this is known by the board, I'm sure it is, but maybe it's not known town-wide about where the lines of governance and/or bureaucracy split between Housing Authority and the town. We run completely independent of the town. We don't take money from the town. And in fact, the exact opposite is true. I'm sure Mr. Mizikar is eyeing that check. We do the pilot instead, no. And we, in fact, donate services to the town, like the Council on Aging Van or the Senior Center Van and things like that. We are funded in part through two different entities, which is both the Fed and the state. Federal, we're managed by HUD, obviously, and state is DHCD. And it's ironic, one of the things I wanted to talk about was the housing crisis touched on by the previous legislators. So, we do manage close to three hundred units in town and they're split up federal and state. There's about a hundred units federal, which is the tower, which most everyone knows about and often people tend to associate with the Housing Authority. But we have, state has actually more flex in the town. We have two state units, which is Elizabeth and Francis. And then we have a variety of state units scattered, that we call them, refer to them colloquially as family units. And they're scattered throughout the town. And there's some on Lake Street, there's some by Shrewsbury Media and Cable. They're kind of all over town and they serve a different set of unique needs, typically not just elderly or what have you. And so, all of those together bring maybe two sixty, two seventy units and then another hundred and seventy-seven Section Eight. And I'm sure this board knows what Section Eight is. So, that's just kind of what we do and how we do and where we get the funding from. This year, we have a pilot payment for the town, which I'm actually pleased to give. I'll just hand it to Mr. Mizikar now. It's nearly fifty thousand dollars. It's something we do every year. Again, it's a state and federal-based formula and the formula is attached to the check. It's based by units and locales and bedrooms and it's the same formula that all housing authorities contribute to all municipalities. So, there's nothing new there. What I thought I might talk about, and again, I said I wouldn't read the letter, we've done a lot of work and improvements to our facilities, which is kind of the bottom half of the letter. I thought I might just talk on a few of the newer and more interesting things. I don't know if this board, the composition of this board was in place when we did the Ridgeland Road project, maybe three to five years ago now. It all blends into me, but if everyone knows where I'm talking about, the deli on South Quinsig, whose name escapes me.
Napoli.
Right across the street from Napoli, there's three or four units all in a row. Those were all Housing Authority units. And those were all newly constructed from the ground up, based on a land grant and an acquisition, again, maybe five years or so ago. We are now pursuing something like that again. This town is obviously in dire need of affordable housing. I don't know how familiar people are with the, the actual layout and presence of Elizabeth Gardens. If you go down Elizabeth Street, to your right, there's kind of a driveway and a parking lot and a shed in a wooded area. And to the left is the actual string of units that's kind of V-shaped. Then to the hard left is parking in the front of those units. We recently began exploration of a study and we're having the, the land surveyed and we're working closely with the state about excess land that we have there. That land was all granted to us years and years ago, probably in the order of, you know, somewhere between twenty, thirty, if not longer, years ago by the town and gifted. And it is our understanding, after taking a little bit of a deeper dive into that project, that we may have some buildable land that's been sitting there unused. So, based on my, albeit rough explanation of where you drive in, think about where that maintenance shed and the dumpster in the woods are on the left, we actually own that land and we own what we now believe is a considerable piece going to, as you're driving in a car, to your right or to the south and further inland, which would be to the east down towards Jordan Pond. We're surveying that land and our intent is to, and this is the unknown, and this is one of the reasons we wanted to kind of sit here and, you know, get it on your radar because this could take several years, with the appropriate funding, figure out potential opportunities to build that product. These could be, and the reason to full circle, Ridgeland Road-like developments. They may not be a typical Housing Authority project. They could be four to six, two to three-unit freestanding creatures. They could be town homage-looking, condo-looking type establishments. We've just begun the process. We expect it'll be several years. The good news is, as I said a minute ago with Ridgeland, believe it or not, we have more flexibility with the state and, as you heard tonight, more allies with the state than we do with the Fed. We're very, very confined on how we can manipulate federal space and land and all of that. So, given that it's state land and it's a state program, we've already begun exploring options of how and what a development of that might look like, including things like, we've already applied for a grant with the Mass Housing Partnership. We've already got on CPA's radar, saying, we know it's a year out, but in the next six months, we might have a survey, we might know what might look good. And we'd like to get on the town's radar. There's no ask here, it's strictly informational, collaboration, cooperation, to let you know that that could be a really redeeming project that the town would love to do in partnership with, that the Housing Authority would love to do in partnership, whoever. If you recall, with Ridgeland Road, it was done in partnership with not just the DHCD, but the Department of Mental Health as well. And so, there was like two or three major players in there as we built and erected those buildings and got them staffed and set up. So, we're excited about that. It's, it's the kind of project Housing Authorities really like to work on. It's the kind of project I personally like to work on and it adds, you know, immense value to the community. So, we wanted to really get that on your radar. There is a pretty significant delineation, as I've said more than once already, between federal and state. And we feel like working on the state side of it, we might be able to move the needle. Conversely, the update on the federal side, we are limited. I was asked earlier today about caps and sizes of federal units. We have ninety-nine units in the federal and I'm awaiting a final answer, but my understanding is that is a statutory limit based on available fundings for expansion on the Fed. That's not official, but it's, it's likely official. However, what we have done as a Housing Authority on the federal side, and I think this body knows this, is we've been able, with the Fed's consent, to erect cell towers on our federal property. And so, then we can take those revenue from the cell towers and do things at the federal property. But again, we can't kind of cross-pollinate. So, we've been able to do things just in the past year on the federal property, like replacing all of the common area furniture, the common rooms and things like that. So, that's kind of a way that this particular Housing Authority has always been a little more entrepreneurial in its operating fashion, all within the rules and regulations of the Fed. Another thing we did on the federal property this year, which my sense is this body may not be aware of, is in the kind of vein of being a good neighbor, for anyone that doesn't know, the Housing Authority, the federal tower, kind of comes down the hill and backs right up to Total Wine and More. Total Wine and More, as you know, when that project got started, or you may or may not be aware, parking was always a real, real issue in that plaza. And we own, if you were standing in the parking lot looking at Total Wine, if you were to look on the left-hand wall, maybe go thirty to fifty feet right where the edge of the little, the fire escape drive-throughs, that's all our land, starting thirty, forty feet off the, off the building and then all the way up the hill in the wooded area. So, we just went into a public-private federal partnership with the owner of that complex and we just did a land lease. And we got permission from HUD and we got the lease signed off on by HUD. And the developer took on one hundred percent of the costs of the improvement, of building a retaining wall, of pushing back the hill. And we negotiated into that lease for our seniors who are going to be, perhaps, you could say they're going to be slightly inconvenienced by slight loss of land. I, I personally advocated for them and I, I think this is in their best interest, but one could see that argument, there's an ongoing stipulation in the lease that they're going to, in addition to paying us, the entity, for the space for, you know, in perpetuity, as long as the lease runs, every year, they're going to fund events and mixers and benefits for the folks at the tower. So, that was an example of kind of, if you will, entrepreneurial approach to a Housing Authority. I don't think you see a lot of things like that in other towns. As I said, I wasn't going to sit here and read this. The only other one that's probably worth mentioning is we've just entered into a partnership with Selco to perform an audit of all of our places. And I think we're starting in Elizabeth or Francis, I might be wrong on that. And that's being funded through the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources and they're having a low-energy audit lease. So, I just really wanted to come and mostly inform you about what we're thinking down the road of Elizabeth, but also kind of maybe bring you up to speed on things that I wouldn't presume to knew that you did or didn't know about what we do and how we do it. And be happy to take questions.
Any questions from the board?
I have some questions regarding the energy audit with Selco. Are residents responsible for heating and cooling costs or is that included in?
I'd say we. The Housing Authority, be it federal or state or DHCD or HUD pays all of that.
So, if, with the results of the audit, will there be, is there like an action plan being developed?
Yeah, so it's a brand-new program, it's a brand-new audit. Selco was able, through our relationship, someone on our board, relationship with Selco, able to get us kind of the top of the queue. And, and I don't even have specific details, but the idea would be the typical kind of energy audit, things you would think of. And it would be funded by the Department of Energy Resources. So, I don't have specifics, it's early days in that program, it's a brand-new program. But, but we're excited to see if, yeah, because ultimately that benefits everybody, including, you know, if you want to say the green or the environment or whatever. In fact, I believe Housing Authority is one of the town's municipality's biggest customers because all of our bills from Francis, Elizabeth and the towers all get aggregated into Selco bills and they're very significant.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for the update. It's always great to hear about the things that are happening through the Housing Authority. It's informative, I think, for the public also because I know there's always confusion about whether or not the Shrewsbury Housing Authority is actually a town department because we do vote.
The lines are definitely.
It's on our municipal ballot. It's, it's confusing, I think, sometimes for people. And I also think it's a great idea to, you know, explore working with the Community Preservation Committee, but also, as we heard, there's an incredible need for affordable housing in town and any opportunity to increase our affordable housing stock is welcome news and looking forward to how we can continue to, you know, cultivate that partnership with.
Yeah, as I said, it's early days. That was one of the driving catalysts of sitting here. But, you know, in three to six months, don't be surprised if we get a formal letter or ask for a sit-down or say, hey, here's what we could be looking at, how would we do this in partnership with the town? And that, just wanted to get it on the radar.
Great, and thank you for the pilot payment. It's always nice when people bring us money.
Exactly. That's right. Awesome.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eight is a continued public hearing from seven oh five PM on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, and seven oh five PM on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, with Taylor Wolf Carnivore Cooking LLC, DBA, Arrow Rays Bistro, Six Hartford Turnpike regarding their application for a common victuals license. So, we are going to close this public hearing. And the reason we will do this is because it was advertised so long ago at this point that if anyone were actually wanting to come to speak on this matter, I don't know that they'd actually even remember that it's happening. We're talking about May or, March or April when we advertise this. So, my recommendation is that we move to close the public hearing and then when the applicant is ready and have their materials together, we just ask them to reapply and we can waive the fees for them. There'll be no penalty to just come back before the board when they're ready. So, if that is amenable to everyone, I would just look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so voted. Item number nine is a meeting with Taylor Galusha, Assistant to the Town Manager, Communications Coordinator, regarding the Shrewsbury Communications Strategic Plan. You gonna go over, sit over there?
No.
Really?
Stand right here.
All right.
I'm just gonna share my screen quickly.
Great.
All right, so, as Chair Casavant stated, I'm Taylor Galusha, I am the Communications Coordinator. I am the Communications Coordinator for the town. Um, and we've recently completed our communications strategic plan and I'm here to, um, talk about the background and planning that went into this document, the plan itself and some current projects and upcoming projects that we're working on. So the town contracted with the UMass Collin Center, um, in early twenty twenty-two to complete three different documents, um, a communications gap assessment, a communications needs assessment and the actual strategic plan. Um, and this was all kind of part of the town's initiative to improve townwide communications and outreach, which we heard a lot from our residents during the general strategic plan process, which was a desire for more engagement and communication opportunities with and from the town. So the first document, the communications gap assessment, um, that was completed in early January and it highlighted areas for the town to focus on, which included accessibility, um, community connections and outreach with different organizations. Um, underserved populations are populations that we weren't reaching well, like low-income residents, renters, seniors, the youth in town. Um, and then some concerns with mental health and, um, transportation. The assessment focused on highlighting potential solutions in these areas and strategies to create improvements where appropriate and able. Um, the needs assessment was completed a month later. Um, and all these documents, uh, contained stakeholder interviews from various, um, town staff, community partners and whatnot that were, allowed them to put together this information. Um, and some of the highlighted areas in the needs assessment were, um, centralizing communications through, uh, general position in town, um, developing a communications strategy, protocol and coherent brand identity, um, broader approaches to service delivery, updating the town website, amongst some, um, other highlighted areas. And these were further detailed into the communications strategic plan with, um, goal areas and strategies. So the plan itself, um, again, completed in March twenty twenty-three. It is broken out into four different goal areas to improve communications and engagement in town. Um, the first goal area is determining Shrewsbury's voice. Second is improving use of existing communications tools. Third, fortify all community communications and ensure inclusion on Shrewsbury's underserved populations and using, um, two-way interactions and engagement, engagement to increase trust. Um, so like I said, each of the goal areas have different strategies associated with it. The first goal area is more of an internal and technical goal, um, which is related to the brand identity mentioned in the communications assessment. So this includes tone and style of communications, um, and like a style guide for communication. So having our communications look like they come from the town and when people see something from the town, they know it came from the town of Shrewsbury and it's a trusted source. Um, the second goal area, improving use of existing communications tools. Um, it lays out four different strategies for the town related to accessibility, um, different possibly ineffective communication methods, monitoring metrics and analytics and creating formal policies and procedures for communications. Um, goal three targets the improvement part of the plan related to community outreach and engagement, as well as reaching those underserved populations identified by the gap assessment. Uh, this goal also focuses on building connections and communications with our non-governmental partners, um, and different town leaders throughout our community. And finally, goal four, um, is closely tied to goal three and it's about integrating these two-way communications into our opportunities and practices with projects and different, um, outreach efforts in town and creating that consistency so residents know when a project comes up, we're being timely, um, we're being consistent and we're continually integrating, um, these strategies into operations of our local government. Um, so this brings us to some current projects that we're working on in town right now. Um, we've already been making progress towards these, um, four, four different goal areas. Um, for example, related to goal one, um, a branding guide was created in the summer of twenty twenty-two. Um, and since then, some changes have been made to the town brand within the development of the strategic plan and other projects. Um, so it's in the process of being updated again to be up to date and relevant. Um, goal two, related to social media policies and communication guides are being developed using best practices and strategies fit to Shrewsbury. Um, this, the communications plan detailed some languages that were popular for translation services in town. So just kind of making sure that we're including, um, policies and guides for all town staff. And related to goal three and four, um, we've been working the past year especially on improving and expanding our means for community outreach and engagement, um, both by making engagement part of projects when appropriate and expanding the methods by which we engage. Um, and this brings me to my more visual slide because I feel like it's helpful to kind of see all the work we've been doing the way that the community, um, it's presented to the community. So I'll start, um, on the top left corner. Um, you can see the Beal or the one through seven redevelopment interactive timeline, which allowed residents to explore, um, different milestones of the project, related documents, meetings and videos, um, as deeply as they wanted to or if they just wanted a quick overview, it was there for them to make that choice for themselves. Um, moving to the strategic plan, community engagement, this was a very robust, multifaceted, um, approach to community engagement where we were attending town events, um, having dedicated meetings in person and virtually. And it really started from the beginning with our national community survey that went out to households in town via mail. We've made, uh, applying to boards and committees in town more accessible and easier through a dedicated webpage that outlines all the different volunteer opportunities for residents to get involved. Um, and now they can apply directly online on that same page when it requires all the information that we would normally ask for, um, making it a lot easier for residents to get involved. Um, these three are scattered throughout the page, but, um, we focused more on employee highlights for the last two years, um, with our promotion alert, um, social media posts, our Y Shrewsbury and Y Local Gov posts and our Welcome to Shrewsbury post welcoming new employees to town. Um, we thought this was a helpful way for residents to get to know town staff, um, make it fun and kind of humanize and make local government more approachable. Additionally, a new webpage was launched, um, under the residence section of the website called Ongoing Projects. Um, and this links out to all the different, um, major projects going on. So, um, the community or the Climate Action Plan, Multimodal Study, Route Twenty Information and, um, others as they're updated. So the Mountain View Cemetery is still on there from town meeting. And, um, the annual report was also updated this year to be more visually appealing and give residents an opportunity, if they want to skim through the book, to kind of get a quick snapshot of all the accomplishments and work of the different departments in town and kind of highlight, um, the work that's being done behind the scenes. Um, this page includes the website redesign, um, Town Manager Download, the communications strategic plan and a few other resources that we've been working on. Um, again, just expanding our portfolio of outreach. So the Town Manager Download is a podcast and it was a new and fun way to make local government more approachable, um, educational and fun for everybody. Um, Stay Connected Shrewsbury is probably the newest on this page. It is a webpage and a brochure, um, webpage being updated weekly with meetings and event information for residents in one convenient place. And it also contains, um, any surveys or community, um, engagement opportunities for residents. And the brochure is published monthly and is available at all public buildings and a digital version is on this webpage as well. Um, the From the Desk of the Select Board was kind of responsive to wanting to be more timely with our updates from the board. Um, it used to be a monthly newsletter published at the end of the month after both or multiple meetings had happened throughout, um, that time period. Um, we switched to doing a write-up and short video the day after the meeting, again, just to be more timely, um, and consistent with the information being shared. Um, finally, I just want to highlight, um, in the top left corner, Shrewsbury Connection will be the new quarterly newsletter that we are, um, in the final stages of production for and hoping to send to the printer in the next two to three weeks, um, to have sent out to residents. So that'll be a quarterly newsletter mailed through the Every Door Direct program with USPS, um, which is very exciting and again, responsive to what we heard through the strategic plan. Um, and then in the future, what we have to look forward to, so much. Um, the Shrewsbury Way Resident Academy will be an opportunity, um, coming in the fall/winter season for residents to learn more about different departments in a in-depth way, kind of, I want to say classroom style, but a little bit classroom style, but we want to make it engaging and fun with some interactive, um, aspects to that. Um, we're looking to improve our use of Facebook and Twitter and hopefully add an Instagram soon. Um, we're updating our service request portal, um, led by Assistant Town Manager David Snowden and Business Systems Analyst Julie Tierney. Um, kind of moving all of our forms, applications and whatnot online to one convenient place so you're not jumping through multiple different platforms. Again, that consistency to make things familiar for residents. And finally, just my goals for the upcoming year because, yep, there's still more to do. Uh, one of my, uh, main goals is a social media campaign, so working to develop a calendar and execute various social media campaigns throughout the year to educate residents on access to town services, highlighting the work and projects of the town and again, spotlighting employees, um, making sure people see familiar faces when they come into town hall. Um, continued development of the Town Manager Download Podcast, um, which again, engaging content, topics and guests that people want to see and learn about. Um, the Shrewsbury Way Resident Academy, again, getting that kicked off in the fall. And then those different information hubs for residents. So the Shrewsbury, um, Connection Newsletter, which will be quarterly, the Stay Connected Shrewsbury brochure monthly and the Stay Connected Shrewsbury webpage, which is weekly, bi-weekly, um, creating those centralized communication areas for residents to go to where they know they can find everything, um, that's going in on, going on in town. And again, just some smaller projects, um, increasing our following, starting that Instagram account and updating, um, our branding guide. That's, that's it.
That's a lot.
Happy to answer any questions that you guys have about anything I talked about.
Any questions or comments for Taylor?
Sorry. Um, I just want to say, I think this is fantastic. The work that you've been doing is incredible. Um, over the years, I've noticed, you know, long before joining the board or getting as deeply involved as I have been in, in the last few years, um, noticed communications from the town like steadily improving, um, regularly. And it was always, um, I was always impressed with like every, there were all these new opportunities to get information coming out and, um, this is just like remarkable. Um, you know, where we were five, ten years ago, it's so different. And, um, I just really appreciate, um, the access that's available. I love when you go to the website, there's a pop-up, like, do you want to sign up for notifications? And, um, it just, it, it's, um, is very appreciated. Um, I know not just by me, but by many people in the community. So thank you for all your hard work. Um, it really does make a difference, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo that. Taylor, I mean, I would say the improvements in just the past two years, one year are amazing and, um, you've, you've made a, an, a very impressive impact and very excited to see what the future holds.
Thank you.
Any comments from, over here?
Yeah, I, I agree with my, my colleagues. Excellent job. I was excited to read through this and, um, really excited to see what, where we'll go in the future. Um, I was curious if you could talk a bit about engagement and, um, I think anecdotally, I've seen more engagement with our social media, for example, but if you had any data on that, on how much that's improved?
Yeah, um, so I do track like our data analytics from Facebook and Twitter. They make it pretty easy now and, um, our website has updated to being connected to Google Analytics, so we can pull reports, um, whenever we want. We've used actually the website data to pick like what those main buttons are on that homepage when you go to our website. So what we consistently see are like trash and recycling are, is always number one for what residents are going to our website for, um, and like the service request portal. And obviously, we want to elevate our agendas and minutes because we want the public to know what's going on. And the notification signup is always a question, um, that we get on how to sign up. So we definitely use that information to drive, um, when we post, what we post and where we posted.
That's awesome. Thank you for that. So we talked a lot about transparency through the years and obviously we're subject to open meeting, but we hear the comment a lot about accessibility, digestibility, and that's what this does. I think in order for our strategic plan to be successful, communication and buy-in will be key. And that started really with the engagement on the strategic plan. And all of this information, I think, um, being readily available will, will, I think, also increase interest in residents possibly serving in various roles as well. Uh, any strategic plan will only be as successful as the implementation and that requires a lot of input from members of the community. I think this really will help us go forward and get that information out there so they can understand that, you know, we have a great town, but we have a very efficiently run government. So I think it's great. You've done everything that you said you would and it's, it's really cool to, to go into. The one thing to think about, that we have different target audiences with the school department and to synchronize with that because you have sixteen or seventeen thousand families, whatever, with the Shrewsbury School Journal, if we can somehow cross-reference for a little bit because they're different audiences, right? So kids graduate and like, oh, that's the rest of the town. And, or you go through Parks and Rec, well, trying to figure out how everything's interrelated that to get families involved earlier, to understand that we are one community and how all of this works together, may be another opportunity to get more involvement. So it's, I mean, it's really accessible, so it's a great job. And look forward to the continued progress because their strategic plans, it's twenty thirty. We're at the beginning and this will go a long way to make sure it's effective. So nice, nice work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you. So can you give an example of how you would be reaching out to underserved populations? What does that look like?
Yeah, so the Every Door Direct program is one good way for the mailings to reach, um, every, every door in town. So it includes all the apartment, um, complexes. So, um, in the past, we've used census, um, information, like our local census to get the Every Door information. Um, but using the USPS mail routes allows for those mailings to make it, um, to those apartment complexes. Also during, um, the stakeholder meetings through this process, um, different complexes in town have, um, offered to like put flyers out in their like lobby and common spaces, so definitely building those community partnerships.
That's great. So like you could take a stack of the brochures that you make and put them at Housing Authority properties, for example?
Yeah, whatever ones have indicated that we can share.
We should have asked Mr. Campanella before he left. I think I have his number. The other question I have for you is just your, your outreach to youth. I know that, you know, recently I've seen some emails come through because there are some students who are doing civic action projects, but what other ways are we making the young people in the community aware of local government?
Yeah, so I had, um, the opportunity during the strategic plan process to meet with the student council at the high school, which was a very, um, enlightening and great conversation, um, with those awesome students. Um, and made that connection with that advisor there. Um, through the Climate Action Plan, we've also reached out to the Green Team at the high school. So we've continued to use the school kind of to bridge that, um, youth gap, I guess, um, through different programming.
That's great. That's good to hear.
Two things, whatever you're doing.
Yep, go ahead.
All right, so, um, just two quick comments for me. So, um, I just wanted to thank the board because this is what allowing us to have the resources um, in place to do the good work allows us to do, right? Like, um, you know, this is an initiative that we've struggled with over the years. Like, how do we fix the website? How do we communicate better? And it really does take resources in a community of forty thousand to be able to do this. So I just really appreciate that opportunity that you've given us. Of course, Taylor's taken this work to the next level, you know, by herself and these, the outcomes are extraordinary, um, but we really appreciate the resources. And then my final comment is, I'm just grateful that Taylor's mic is attached to the table because she definitely deserves to drop the mic. A lot of amazing work.
I skipped notes. I skipped notes.
That, that's for sure. We're very fortunate to have you, for sure. You know how I love the Town App. It's like my favorite thing. Is the Stay Connected Shrewsbury, is, can that go as a button on the app?
We're working with our content manager at Civic Plus to update some of those buttons on the app. So we'll have the new service request portal on that app instead of see click fix. And then we'll be looking to have that Stay Connected.
I think that'd be really helpful. And if people at home are watching and they still don't know that we have a Town of Shrewsbury app, we do. And that is the easiest way to figure out whether it's, you know, plastic or paper recycling, or where to buy blue bags when it's the morning of your trash pickup and you realize you have none.
Shrewsbury MA.
Be surprised. There is one person in town who will text me and ask me these questions. Trash pickup. So, and I go right to the app and I'm, I'm able to find out. So thank you for all the work that you put into this. It's a pleasure to work with you. So there's no more, no more questions? All right, then we will go on to item number 10 under New Business, which was to review and act on the proclamation request for John Ostrowski pursuant to Select Board Policy 30. Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so voted. Item number 11 is to review and act on the address change request for 586A Main Street pursuant to Select Board Policy 29. So we do have a policy for address changes, and we have a couple of them this evening. And I believe this is just to, we're changing 586A Main Street to 2 Grafton Street. 2 Grafton Street is the mailing and locational address for Willie's Steakhouse Grill and Sushi Bar that has been historically used. And so we are just making this change so that it matches up with. So it's correct, right? Well, historically is used is what it actually is as the address. Questions or comments?
Motion to approve address change for 586A Main Street to 2 Grafton Street.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so voted. Item number 12 is also an address change. So it's to review and act on the address change request for 42 Sadler Avenue and 39 Melvin Avenue pursuant to Select Board Policy 29. And so this agenda item is a request for this change. For those two addresses, they will be 20 Greylock Avenue and 22 Greylock Avenue. There are currently two vacant parcels on which the owner will build two single-family homes, one on each lot. And the houses will have frontage on Greylock Avenue. And that is why we need to change the addresses for public safety reasons. Any questions?
Motion to approve address change for 42 Sadler Avenue to 20 Greylock Avenue and 39 Melvin Avenue to 22 Greylock Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so voted. Item number 13 is to review and act on the Select Board meeting calendar for July 2023 through December 2023. So if you take a look at this, you'll note that in December, the board will meet on the second and third Tuesday of the month instead of the second and the fourth Tuesday. And that is just to accommodate the way the holiday falls with Christmas. Usually, no one wants to be here on the 26th. So we will just move the meeting around. We've done this in the past. Thanksgiving wasn't an issue, so it's only that one change. Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so voted. Item number 15 is to review and act on the 2023 Affordable Housing Rent Increase Request for Edgemere Crossing. And this is just something that, what did I do? Did I do something wrong? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, for Quinn, my, I skipped. I'll start again. Item number 14 is to review and act on the 2023 Affordable Housing Rent Increase Request for Quinn 35. And we're about to do three of these in a row, which is how that ended up that way. So this agenda item is just asking the board to review the 2023 Affordable Housing Rent Increase Request. And these requests occur annually, and they do require a certified vote from our board. Each facility that has an affordable housing component submits this request on their own. And it is a formula-based decision that needs to be ratified by this board. It's part of our agreement when these developments come into our community and we do require a certain percentage of their units to be affordable. They are able to raise the rent on a yearly basis to keep it in line with 80% of the annual median income. So these are basically just sort of rote items, and we'll do three of them tonight. Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve the 2023 Affordable Housing Rent Increase Request for Quinn 35.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Item number 15 is to review and act on the 2023 Affordable Housing Rent Increase Request for Edgemere Crossing. Again, same situation. Questions? Comments?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. And item number 16 is to review and act on the 2023 Affordable Housing Rent Increase Request for Audubon Shrewsbury.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Item number 17 is to review and act on the one-day all-alcohol license application of Rami Chamun, St. Mary's Syrian Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive for a baby shower on Saturday, July 1st, 2023, from 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
Move approval?
Just one comment?
Yes.
Just on the policy provided, it looks like the policy expired in '22?
Hold on.
So just approved subject to them providing certificate of insurance?
Yep. Probably going to be the same problem on the next one.
This must have got mixed in because the more recent ones from prior meetings have been up to date. So we'll get the right.
Where do you see that? Because I feel like mine say '23.
On the certificate of liability insurance? On the commercial, where it's policy effect?
Ah, I gotcha. Good eye.
Take my glasses off.
Because to me, that could be anything. Okay, so we'll do it just pursuant to them providing they're updated.
Yeah, second. So approval subject to them. Okay, in second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. And then we'll have the same issue on this one. So review and act on the one-day all-alcohol license application of Rami Chamun, St. Mary's Syrian Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive for a wedding on Saturday, July 8th, 2023, 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
Motion to approve contingent upon an updated license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to read the correspondence and then I'll go into executive session. So I'm just going to skip to item number 20.
I said license. I meant certificate of insurance. So sorry.
Item number 20 is an email dated May 25th, 2023, from Carrie Stockwell, Principal Department Assistant of the Health Department regarding 152 Boston Turnpike and a closure order. Item 21 is a letter received May 25th, 2023, from Kristen F. Shuffle, Scout Board Member, Troop 4, regarding a proclamation request. Item 22 is a letter dated May 25th, 2023, from Debbie Russell, Offer of Leasing and State Office Planning Director, regarding a notice of intent to submit a project proposal to asset management. Item number 23 is a letter received June 1st, 2023, from Hannah Kane, Hannah Kane Charitable Foundation, regarding the Ninth Annual Hannah Kane Charity Classic. Item number 24 is a letter received June 1st, 2023, from Mary Thompson of the Retirement Board Chair, regarding special notice on cost of living adjustment. Item number 25 is a letter received June 1st, 2023, from Kylie Griffin, Shrewsbury Scholarship Recipient, with a thank you. Item number 26 is a letter received June 6th, 2023, from Lexi Kent, Shrewsbury Scholarship Recipient, also a thank you. And item number 27 is an email dated June 7th, 2023, from Sebastian Salvin and Manya Chichapu, Shrewsbury High School students, regarding an important school project regarding car crashes. So that was, as I was referencing earlier, civic action projects that Mrs. Flynn and I both know are being done by the students at Shrewsbury High School, I think in the junior class. We both have juniors. And sometimes that results in emails coming our way. So I did respond just knowing that they were on a timetable with school ending soon. They actually were looking at Gulf Street, which is the back way to the high school, and a turn at the intersection with Slocum Meadow Lane, asking that we have some sort of sign, a review there, and maybe a sign to indicate that it is a dangerous curve, just given the speed and the number of cars that do travel that road twice a day when school's in session. So I responded to them, and I just said that we would pass this along for the traffic team to review and let them know what the decision was and next steps. That was 27. So item number 28 is a ZBA decision from May 22nd, 2023, from William Godete for a variance for a property located at 400 Oak Street. So we are going to go back to item 19, which is executive session. So we are going to be entering into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, Town Manager. And this agenda item asks the board to enter it into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, so that we can have those discussions. And we will not be coming back into open session. So we will adjourn right from our executive session. And to enter into executive session, it will require a roll call vote. So I'll get the motion from you.
Motion to move to executive session as outlined by the chair.
Second.
Okay, so roll call vote, Select Board Member Flynn.
Aye.
Select Board Member Samia.
Aye.
Select Board Member Conlon.
Aye.
Select Board Member Garcia.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you very much.